And we have another exciting update we've shared with you previously and of course, have been grateful for the board's support in the implementation of the Henrico Cares Initiative. You heard a little bit in our budget presentation about year two of the Cares Initiative and what that would bring as far as supports for our staff, students, and community. And so Dr. Hughes and Mrs. Parker are going to share a presentation on Henrico Cares.
Okay, once again, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. Leslie Hughes, Chief Learning Officer, and as Dr. Cashwell said, Liz Parker, Director of Student Support and Wellness. Together today, we will present a one-year overview on the Henrico Cares implementation to date. As you will recall, Henrico Cares is a joint partnership between Henrico County Public Schools and Henrico County Government that is strategically aimed at serving HCPS students and families and includes core elements driving the evolution of youth mental health care services and support in Henrico County. Henrico Cares is an action plan implemented in phases and fully funded after five years with an estimated total investment of 17.8 million that works to ensure HPCS young people and their families can easily access and navigate a full array of coordinated and integrated mental health care services at various levels of intensity across multiple county agencies, the school system, private and community treatment providers, to meet their needs as they shift over time. Henrico Cares directly aligns with HCPS Destination 2025, specifically Strategic Goal Two. Henrico County Public Schools will foster an inclusive, safe, and supportive climate for all stakeholders and shows what happens when innovation meets dedication. I will now turn the remainder of the presentation over to Liz Parker, who will share initial outcomes of these specific initiatives as they work together to address the full array of youth mental health needs in Henrico County.
Thank you, Dr. Hughes. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. What started as a charge to bring forward recommendations on how to build Henrico's capacity to meet the growing mental health needs of its young people evolved into a collaborative and transformational model that really sets a new standard for addressing youth mental health. Henrico Cares leverages strategic partnerships to bring together all strategies, recommendations, and best practices that were identified through an extensive review of analysis of data and research into one single comprehensive action plan, all aligned around these three cornerstone of youth mental health care that you see here: access, coordination, and navigation. As you will recall, the goals of Henrico Cares are threefold. First, it aims to build a comprehensive school mental health system, ensuring every HCPS student has access to a full continuum of mental health care services and supports when and where they need them, while enhancing information sharing and service coordination between schools, families, medical and mental health care providers, and community agencies, and at the same time, simplifying the navigation of an often complex and intimidating mental health care system for students and their families, as well as for schools and for That term "comprehensive school mental health system" really just referenced in these goals, really just speaks to a systematic approach for identifying, providing, and monitoring evidence-based interventions and services. So here, interventions and programs are delivered within a multi-tiered systems of support. And this allows mental health care services and support to increase or decrease in the level of intensity to match students' emotional and mental health needs as they shift over time. On this slide, you see how school-based mental health providers, our school counselors, school social workers, and school psychologists are integral to the provision of school mental health interventions and services across tiers. And as you are aware, there are times when student mental health needs require a higher level of intervention than the school is either able to provide or then is appropriate to take place within that learning context. So when this occurs, our counselors leverage their connections and partnerships under Henrico Cares to facilitate warm handoffs with private, public, and community providers to help address the full spectrum of youth mental health needs. Once services are established, counselors engage in continued coordination between the family, additional school staff, and private or community providers to improve student mental health outcomes. As you can see, school-based mental health providers delivering tiered interventions with fidelity and then accomplishing warm handoff and coordination tasks are imperative to the functioning of a comprehensive school mental health system. Fortunately, Henrico Cares provides for the addition of five new school-based mental health positions annually. For the current school year, those positions turned into Tiered Intervention School Counselor Positions. That's what was established. Each Tiered Intervention School Counselor, or TISC for short, serves directly to high schools and utilizes trauma-informed approaches to provide evidence-based programs and interventions specifically addressing youth substance use, violence, and mental health. TISCs also work to proactively address many of the underlying factors known to increase youth risk behavior. More specifically, TISCs collaboratively team with HCPS's Coordinator of Substance Use Prevention and Intervention, existing school-based mental health providers, and other content areas to enhance service delivery. In fact, due to successful teaming with Health and PE, over 16,000 HCPS students in grades six through 10 have received Life Skills Training, or LST. This is an evidence-based curriculum shown to prevent youth substance use, violence, and other health risk behaviors. And approximately 2,700 students in grades nine through 10 have successfully completed Catch My Breath, an evidence-based youth vaping prevention program to date. Additionally, TISCs have provided 60 students displaying the early stages of substance misuse with the evidence-based program Teen Intervene. Finally, along with Henrico's share office and other community partners, TISCs support their school's implementation of Hidden in Plain Sight, an interactive event that replicates a young person's bedroom for parents and guardians to search as a way to educate on how easily items can be hidden, possible signs of substance use, and how to engage in proactive discussions with their child. Current data shows a 90% increase in hidden in plain sight event participation this school year as compared to the same time last school year. Looking ahead, the superintendent's financial plan for the 25-26 school year includes five additional counseling positions, allowing for more timely and targeted support and further reducing barriers for students, including our earliest learners, to access high-quality social, emotional, and mental health care within the school environment. In addition to the staffing and evidence-based programming we just discussed, two new services were launched for HCPS students and their families under Henrico Cares, both of which are available regardless of insurance status at no cost. The first was Care Solus, which was our care coordination service, in which multilingual care coordinators work 24 hours a day, 365 days a week, quickly researching and connecting students, families, and staff members to mental health care and substance use treatment providers, securing appointments on their behalf, and even providing follow-up to make sure the appointment was a success. The next service was Hazel Health, a national teletherapy service in which fully vetted licensed therapists with parent guardian permission are providing students in grades nine through 12 with weekly virtual therapy sessions from the comfort of their own home. Both of these services were formally launched just a little over five months ago. However, in this short period of time, the impact has been profound. First, due to the implementation of Care Solus, 279 individuals connected with HCPS that include staff, students, and families with whom utilized Care Solus's services were confirmed to have already participated in successful appointments with a mental health provider with an average wait time of just two to three weeks. This equates to a 45% rate of appointments into care, which is significantly higher than the national average of 18. Approximately 37 of those being served identify as children, 31% as adolescents, and 31% as adults. And as you can see, the top five reasons reported for seeking support include anxiety, depression, trauma, ADHD, and disruptive behavior. Relatedly, a total of 494 searches have been completed to date on the accompanying Care Match website. That's specifically curated for HCPS and provides a self-guided tool for individuals that want to anonymously connect with a mental health care provider on their own. The implementation of Hazel Health has resulted in similar gains. In fact, at the time this presentation was published, 54 individual students in grades nine through 12 were currently participating or had participated in a total of 138 weekly virtual therapy sessions with a licensed mental health provider. And an additional 52 individual students were already scheduled for their first teletherapy appointment. And just in that short period of time between then and now, these numbers have increased from 54 to 56 students participating in weekly virtual sessions and from 52 to 68 students scheduled for their first teletherapy appointment. Furthermore, Hazel Health provides consistent and ongoing outreach to all referrals received and has been able to successfully engage with 73% of those referred. Of those, 77% of parents and guardians opted in and consented to their child receiving services. And of those opting in, 80% of students were successfully scheduled for their first initial teletherapy appointment. Here we see the top five reasons reported for seeking teletherapy, including anxiety, sadness, feeling sad, anxious, and withdrawn, family concerns, and grief and loss. Just as important, Henrico Cares provides HCPS with an opportunity to continue building integrated mental health care services. This year, HCPS partnered with Henrico Area Mental Health to co-locate an additional mental health team, including a licensed mental health provider, a case manager, and a clinical supervisor on the campus of Fairfield Middle School. Services provided include individual, group, and/or family therapy, case management, and family support. As a result, Henrico Area Mental Health Teams now serve on two HCPS school campuses, including the Academy at Virginia Randolph, with plans to continue co-locating one new team annually. Additionally, under Henrico Cares, a number of joint trainings were provided throughout the summer and fall that involved staff from HCPS, county agencies, and community leaders. This resulted in 23 new nationally-certified youth mental health first aid instructors, 11 new Adverse Childhood Experience, or ACE, interface trainers, and 14 new nationally-certified teen mental health first aid instructors, which significantly increases the capacity for mental health literacy building and stigma reduction efforts throughout the school division and the county. Young people often turn to a trusted individual before they turn to a mental health professional. And when important people in a young person's life know how to respond, they can significantly expand the safety net for those in need. Furthermore, Henrico Cares paved the path for HCPS to significantly expand membership in each of its 11 Active Minds student-led mental health clubs, initially made possible by the Henrico Education Foundation. Now, with over 386 active high school student members and an additional 58 high school students holding new leadership positions within their chapter, these powerhouse student groups are working hard to serve the needs in their communities and create cultures that are more supportive of mental health through policy change, promotion of services, awareness, and community-building events, social connections, and more. Finally, under Henrico Cares, HCPS was able to develop a model that builds existing staff capacity for meeting more intensive student mental health needs while strengthening school division staffing efforts for school-based mental health providers and expanding the pipeline of highly qualified licensed mental health providers in our schools and communities. To do this, HCPS partners with Henrico Area Mental Health and a local private mental health care agency to provide 12 qualifying HCPS school counselors and school social workers who have served in their roles for at least three years with clinical supervision at no cost to them as they pursue licensure by the Virginia Department of Health professions as either licensed clinical social workers or licensed professional counselors while they continue to serve in their existing school-based mental health roles. This pursuit's typically a three- and a three-and-a-half-year journey, and as an additional benefit for those professionals continuing to serve HCPS after they receive their licensure, both the LPC and the LCSW licensure were added to the HCPS career ladder as being eligible for a salary advancement.
In sum, these initial results speak volumes about the transformative impact Henrico Cares has and will continue to have on Henrico's young people and their families. At this time, Ms. Parker and I are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. I'll stick to my right this time with Mr. Irving.
Thank you for the presentation. Henrico Cares has been one of my, I think, favorite things that we do. I just think it's remarkably important, a service that we provide not only for our students but our staff and families as well. So I'm looking at some of this, and I love that the information sharing and coordination between primary care providers and the mental health providers, that's, I think, crucial because I think that's something that gets lost in the platform. Like, it's very easy to see that you get these services, but then the logistics of actually doing it are far more challenging. So I appreciate that. And simplifying the navigation process, especially for young people, I think, is vital because that can always be a barrier to entry on these things is, well, it's nice that I want this, but I don't even know how to do it. So I truly appreciate that. What is, so you were saying that our wait time is for students who, or staff, who first say, "I want to do this," to getting their first appointment is, how long again?
We have been averaging two to three weeks of wait time from when they access and make contact with Care Solus to when they have their initial intake appointment, which is significantly less wait time than we have ever been able to see on our own.
Yeah, no, that's tremendous. Is there any way to, like, logistically shorten that further? I don't know if it is possible, but I'm just curious, like, if that's even a thing that can be done.
We can certainly look into that. Typically, the average wait time can extend to six months after that initial call. So we were thrilled with two weeks, but I would be just as thrilled with less time as well.
No, no, and if it's one of those things where that's probably the upper bound of what's possible, then that's tremendous. So I was seeing on here 279 appointments into care. What defines an appointment? Is that a session? Like, how are we measuring that?
So Care Solus actually follows up with every single individual in which they schedule an appointment for. And when they do that, they're confirming that the individual attended the sessions and that it was a positive experience and that they've rescheduled another session as well. So they want to make sure that they attended, it was successful, and if it wasn't successful, they can troubleshoot and help support the next step.
Okay. So when I'm looking at 279 appointments, I'm thinking naturally, are we, do we feel that this is being underutilized?
I think that, well...
And that could be not, just maybe people aren't as aware of how accessible it is. And I'm just curious what the challenges are because we have so many people within our division and that extend to families and staff. I'm just curious if it's something that we maybe need to do better to get out there to make folks aware.
Yes. Well, we continue to publicize, promote in multiple languages all over the place and every outlet that we have that this is available. And, you know, we still find that folks aren't aware sometimes, but we do everything we can just through traditional communication outlets and everything we can. We want folks to know this is available, and we want folks to utilize the service.
Yeah.
And in addition, I'll just share that we do have families and students who access mental health care in another manner besides what we are able to provide. And so this is strictly our data that we have since the beginning of the year, but we do know, you know, families have other avenues that they are utilizing, and we don't have that data specifically. But I think together, it would indicate many more students and families in our division who are utilizing mental health services.
And that number does not reflect any families who connected as a result of using the anonymous site lookup and connection.
Okay. Yeah, because unfortunately, there still is a societal stigma around mental health-related issues. And I think while that is falling away, it's still there. And, I mean, I want whoever wants to use this to be able to use it. So it's more so hoping that, you know, folks feel that they can. Because I see 54 students participating and bating on here have accounted for essentially half of the sessions. So I do think that it's great that we're helping those who seem to need it the most, but I just, you know, want folks to know that this is available and out there, and it's a tremendous thing that we're doing. My last, well, I have two more questions. And I don't know if you'll even know the answer to this. Does Medicaid funding support any of these providers?
The providers.
Medicaid funding, yeah, support any of these providers that we're using?
So that's completely, yes, but that's one of the questions they ask when someone calls into Care Solus. So Hazel Health is completely at no cost. They don't need insurance. They don't bill insurance. But for Care Solus, that's one of their initial intake questions. And that way, they're only providing providers to an individual that is matching the individual's health care status and insurance. But I will say that we do have a number of families that have had successful appointments with no insurance or who are underinsured as well.
Okay. Well, that's tremendous. And what do you need from us to expand and build existing staff capacity?
I just am so appreciative of the board's support for Henrico Cares so far and just continued support and efforts. I mean, this has been really wonderful, and we are seeing significant impact.
Well, we thank you for all of your work.
Thanks so much, Mr. Young.
Thank you for the presentation. I think investing in mental health is probably some of the most important work we'll do as a school board. To Mr. Irving's point, is there anything that we're doing to remove that stigma of therapy, mental health? Are we promoting it in any sort of way that lets our students or faculty know that it's okay to seek help or it's okay to have therapy? Is there any sort of, are we really promoting it to a point where...
We are. A lot of that work comes through our Active Minds Clubs, which have been tremendous because that's part of that role, is it's peer-to-peer, right? It's students talking to other students and really raising that awareness and reducing that stigma from a peer. I think that a lot of our trainings, our teen mental health first aid especially, and our youth mental health first aid efforts really do target that as well. We've been partnering with faith-based organizations and community organizations to provide those trainings because that's really part of the goal, is stigma reduction and connection.
Yeah. And let me ask you this, is there any sort of way, I know students that need mental health care and need counseling. If, let's say, a faculty member recognizes a student needing it, is there any way to put it in their path where we know that they're getting the help they need as opposed to just, man, maybe giving them a Hazel Health brochure or something like that?
Yes. So we can definitely make a referral. So any school counselor or school-based mental health provider can actually physically refer that student to the service. And then we ask that they connect with the family because that just increases the likelihood that the family will then take part once they're contacted by Hazel. So there are definitely efforts like that that are occurring.
Okay, okay. And last question, the five new counselors that we're putting in place, where are they going to be located at? I know the first five were at different high schools, or at least were sharing high schools. Where are the next five going?
So we are, we want to make really good data-informed decisions because we want to make sure that we are placing folks where there's the greatest need that matches their skill set. So we continue to analyze all of our data points that will help us come to that determination. So we want to look at quarter one, quarter two, quarter three, and make sure that our placement is really strategic.
Okay. Awesome. Well, thank you for the work that you guys are doing. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. I'm going to go to Ms. Atkins, and I know she's excited about this.
Yeah, I'm marinating because we've come a long way from nothing. So any number that's put up here is progress. I also want to say specifically to communities that are watching, or if this is someone that's watching after this broadcast, that the well-being of our students, staff, and school communities is the heart, a part of what we do. When students feel supported in their mental health, they thrive academically and they develop a strong sense of self-worth. Who they look at in the mirror is important. So this action plan, which is the verbiage we use, you can say initiative, you'll hear many other words, but it's a powerful model for addressing mental health. And I also want to say to both of you and your team, well said, that this is what happens when dedication meets innovation. I would encourage you to use that as a tagline actually on the marketing materials. It sounds silly, but catchy taglines for youth work. So that's just something for you to consider as you're trying to make this welcoming for younger folks. Grabbing them with a catchy tagline on social media works. Also, a huge shout-out to all mental health professionals who help students and families navigate their emotions, you're recognizing patterns, and you're learning how to process them and helping others process them. So thank you, also thank you to Hef for Active Minds, huge shout-out for our partners and finding funding so that we can accomplish things like this, and it will continue to evolve. This is a beginning step. This is actually a baby step. And as the baby continues to grow, it will evolve. And so again, I'm very excited about this process, about the collaborative efforts that it has taken internally, externally, as well with individuals from all seasons involved in this project. I do have a few questions for you. So I think I heard the acronym BOA, we love those TISC.
Yes.
Is that, okay.
The Tiered Intervention School Counselor.
Okay, I will also use TISC as well. So are we actively seeking candidates with specific specialties? The one that has come to mind was dialectical behavioral therapy, not specifically around the top three that I saw on your chart. So we are?
Correct, yes. And we actually train, we actually have held a number of trainings for, it's DBT. Yep, absolutely correct. So DBT in schools is an evidence-based program that we utilize, first of all, counseling groups and individual counseling here in HCPS. And so our TISCs, as well as all of our school counselors and school-based mental health providers, actually do provide that intervention, DBT, in our schools.
Yes, so I'm excited to hear about the DBT skills. What's interesting and something for you to consider is for someone that may not have the complete specialization, there are pieces of that that I think would be helpful for administrative staff and leadership team. So when we're thinking about those particular skills, right now with DBT, of course, with our counselor, psychiatrist, psychologist, they have the full specializations often or certifications. But take a look at some of the skills within that, some of the trainings within that, and share them with Dr. Cashwell's leadership team and your administrative teams. I think they may find it useful. I heard in the past presentation, it's nice to learn something on Tuesday and implement it on Wednesday. Some of the trainings within DBT may allow individuals to do just that. So just wanted to give you that at top of mind. The other question that I had is, so usage data. And so I think each of us will probably ask this in our own unique way, but I'm specifically wanting to understand trends. So we have the numbers in front of us in your presentation, but the question is, out of context or not having history, you may not understand the impact. I think if we understood the trends that flow along with the data that you presented to us today, as leaders, we may be able to offer additional guidance. So my ask is, for the data that you provided, please share with myself and colleagues the trends that you see that led to the numbers that you presented us. I'm pretty aware, I believe, of what the trends are, but I think it's always wise to memorialize it and then you share it. And then the conversations could be more around funding. Or of the five that we are hiring and we understand the trends, how does that equate to service? I'm a service provider, so that's where these questions are coming from. And then the last thing is, I just want to say to everyone, it's okay to ask for help. I have had to ask for mental health help. And so to remove the stigma, if you... And so to remove the stigma, if you have a counselor or psychologist, a psychiatrist, it's okay to talk about it. It's a great way to open the door for someone else to say, "I need help too." So I wanted to use this platform just to say that, and any platform that I have, in order to reduce this stigma, we have to say it's okay to ask for help. So I want to thank the both of you for what you do and your teams for what you do. This is hard and hard work, and when you're trying to infuse this and make it, I'm going to use the word attractive to children, it's not. It's never really easy to talk about pain. And so many of our children have experienced grief, whether it was from internally within our schools or externally. So reaching one actually reaches many. And so in this presentation, that's the type of stuff that I'd love to see and hear. How does reaching one reach many? Include that in your presentations, not here, but wherever you share them, because that is how we increase usage of some of the wonderful resources that we have. So I appreciate you, and thank you so much, Mrs. Shea.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. This is really tremendous work. I remember when we did our town hall at the Oak, and I first heard Ms. Parker talk about the utilization of this and really got to hear kind of the nuts and bolts, particularly around Carisolus. I was just absolutely floored. It is so hard to get an appointment for mental health, especially youth mental health, you know, these six-month waiting periods. It's also really hard to just navigate and figure out, who do I even call? And so the fact that Carisolus will ask you questions, figure out where you should go, make the first appointment for you, and for you to say there's a two- to three-week waiting period, I mean, it's longer than that to get my dog bathed, right? You know, waiting period. I mean, that's absolutely incredible, and that's life-changing. And then the follow-up to make sure they went and it was a good fit and not, how do we pivot? I think it's just incredible, and I've been floored ever since October when I first heard about it and, you know, continue just to be really impressed with it. I think an important part of this as well, when we talk about destigmatizing, is the lessons that your counselors do in elementary school, starting in elementary school. They're really giving our students the language on how to articulate things around their feeling, understanding how the brain works, all of these things, and being okay talking about these things. One of my children had an issue, and, you know, I finally said, "Do you want to talk to someone about this?" You know, and I said, "Like, like, like therapy?" And, you know, so I kind of took a bite, and I said, "Well, yes." And he said, "Oh, I have so many feelings I want to talk about. That would be great." You know, and I think, you know, some of these counselor lessons starting in elementary school have really primed the pump with that, like, it's okay to talk about feelings. Here's some words to use to talk about feelings. And so I think that's an important part that dovetails in this as they move on to middle school and high school. And, yeah, so thank you for also that work that was not in this presentation but is a really important part of this work as well. And then one question, you mentioned that there's a 90% increase in the attendance in Hidden in Plain Sight events this year as opposed to last year. I got to go to...I went to one of those a couple of years ago, and it's really incredible, the information they share with parents, and they're very real about it. Do we know what we can attribute that increase to?
So I think having the TISCs there as well to partner with the schools and to partner with our Coordinator of Substance Use Prevention and Intervention, just having the boots on the ground to be able to do some of that work. But also, this year, we focused a lot on bringing that down to middle school as well and to inviting middle schools and to marketing and promoting to middle schools as well to families, and we've had and seen a lot of family participation at middle school as well as our high school families.
Interesting. Well, it's great news to increase participation and awareness, so I appreciate it. And that's all for me. Any follow-ups from my colleagues? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.